So much to see and do in Grants. Parks provide relaxation for picnic's and athletic events. Creative activities abound at the Senior Citizen Center. The new animal shelter is a state-of-the-art facility for our lost pets. Grants is home to the Mount Taylor Quad, Fire Nice Bike Rally, Fourth of July Rodeo, and so much more. Grants, the gateway to outdoor adventures, sightseeing, hunting, hiking, biking, and riding. Grants, where ancient and modern civilizations meet. Grants, a great place to live.
There are three major hikers hikes in the U.S. The Appalachian Trail, which is 2,100 miles long, they call it the AT. The Pacific Crest Trail, that's 2,600 miles long, they call it the PCT. And then, of course, the Continental Divide Trail, and it's 3,100 miles long. The three hikers usually hike the AT first, the PCT, and then our long trail, they do last, and they call it the Triple Crown. They get a plaque when they complete these three trails. The hikers are a very tight-knit community. They know each other, and there are thousands of them. They stay in contact, sometimes daily. They not only contact each other through Facebook, blogs, and online journals, they, if there's ever a problem, they know about it right away. And if they have a bad experience, everybody knows about it right away. The hikers already know about Grants. There's a book that's published every year. It's a city guide, and it gives a map and all the things that are available here. The hikers come from all over the world, not only, excuse me, not only every state in the Union. We have hikers from Sweden, Denmark, Germany, the UK, France, New Zealand, Australia, Canada, Japan, and we even had the first Koreans come through this year. We've helped a hiker that lives in Abu Dhabi, so we're well-known around the world. And the hikers come in town, they look pretty scraggly. However, the majority of them are professionals. They're lawyers, they're nurses, they're teachers, they're judges, they're business owners, the young people are college students, and a lot of them are graduates that are just waiting to get their careers started. The season for Grants starts in April and goes through mid-June for the northbounders, and middle of September and the 1st of November for the southbounders. They're about two months in spring and two months in the fall when they come through here, and the most important thing they need is water. They need water south of Grants as well as north. On the trail, most of the water they get are from tanks at windmills and spring-fed cow tanks. They do have purifying systems with them. What they, what we're hoping for tonight is assistance in reaching out to the ranchers, the BLM, the forestry, because the Grants area, the water availability is from three windmills south of Grants and one cow tank on Mount Taylor. And right now, two of the three windmills are dry, and there's no water on Mount Taylor. And it's, this is because the ranchers turn off the windmills when they don't have cattle. So if there was some way of getting help with the ranchers, being aware of that, maybe during the time the hikers come through, to have these running. And, but we do have a water cache that's down on the Akamazooee Trail, and I sometimes think it's the only thing that keeps the hikers going in this area. The next thing they need is transportation. More often than not, the transit system isn't available when the hikers are here. If there was a way during the months that the hikers are in Grants to have, you know, maybe one of the transit vehicles have a defined schedule that the hikers know and that they can catch the bus and go to the post office, the library, stores. We give hundreds of rides every year, and even if other people could volunteer to help with this ride situation, to get them to the post office and the library. A number of the hikers has doubled in the years that we have been doing this, which is about six. There were 200 hikers that came through Grants northbound this year. We still have two in town, and about 50 are coming southbound from Canada to New Mexico. Because they have the improvement in the trail and better maps and the current ability for the hikers to download the maps with GPS waypoints to their phones, this number is going to be 10 times more. In the next three or four years, we'll have 1,000 hikers coming through, and maybe in the next six or seven, we'll have 2,000 coming through. There's more than 3,000 people that hike the AT. There are 2,000 that started this year on the PCT, so we know that this is something that's going to happen in the not-too-distant future, and it's going to happen in Grants. The last thing the hikers need are discounts in motels and restaurants. They have hiked 425 miles to get to Grants, and this is the first community since Silver City. And Silver City is big with helping the hikers. They have a wonderful program, and perhaps people from here could contact them, find out some of the things they've been available to the hikers. At any rate, they have been sleeping on the ground for hundreds of miles and really want a soft bed. They usually only stay one night, but would be more likely to stay two if motel rates provided a hiker discount. Right now, the Motel 6 is $49.95 plus tax. The hikers are on a tight budget. It costs $5,000 to $8,000 to hike the Continental Divide Trail. Those on the $5,000 budget can't afford to stay more than one night. The hikers are starved when they get to town, and they're eat their way from one restaurant to the other, all the way to the other end of town. And if they could get a discount in any of the restaurants, they'd all appreciate it. And also, they purchase resupply from all of our grocery stores. Smiths, they never go to Milan, it's all Grants, and of course Walmart. And they purchase the food in Grants and they mail it to Cuba, Ghost Ranch, and Chama, because the food they want isn't available in any of those communities. So they use our post office, and they mail boxes to all of these communities, and they buy the food here. They spend a lot of money in our area, and our hope is that our area will help support them more. There are three alternate ways for the hikers to get into Grants, but all roads lead to Grants. There'll never be a time the trail doesn't come here. So our hope is that they can have more help when they get here. And I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. At any rate, if I can answer any questions, we've been doing this for a while, and we really, we really support what these people are doing.
Sydney, questions?
Do you have any, anything established for people to donate money for this?
We have, we just volunteer. The hikers, if they choose, give us a donation that helps cover our water cache and our gas, but a good many of them don't. They just really are grateful, but we don't have anything set up for donations, no.
So you don't have, like, if, if a neighbor wanted to donate money for, for his cause, they can't?
Nothing has been set up. We're, we've sort of been doing this, you know, on our own, finding our way through and doing everything that we can to help.
I'm not sure if all the city council members are aware, but it was brought up at a past meeting that we really want to start supporting this effort and being a very amenable community to helping these hikers. And so I did put an application about a week ago to the Coalition, the Continental Divide Coalition, to be a Gateway Community. We got an email back a day or so ago, and they're going to set up a conference call. We're going to use Team 66 as our advisory committee, and Mike and I will work with that committee to get things lined up, to assist. And so Carol's name was provided to me by a couple of different people, and so I think we can work in partnership. This would be great. The more we can do to help them, the better it's going to be for the community and especially for the hikers.
Mrs. Mumm, you and I had a conversation about three years ago, and at one time you said you had an water station, and the BLM took it over or something?
No, we just lost them. Unfortunately, we had two up in the mountain, which are really were so important, but they felt that they weren't sustainable and that there wasn't any regulation allowing it, so we lost the water caches on Mount Taylor.
You know, and that's something that we had that came up in our last meeting with the Forest Service and stuff, that they can't be liable for that stuff. But I've noticed, I mean, I'm on the mountain all the time, all the time, and I've noticed, especially on the Continental Divide Trail where it crosses over on Lahata Mesa, people leave water bottles all over there, gallon distilled water. And, oh yeah, they hang right there on the sign that says Continental Divide Trail, and there's like 15 of them that hang there.
Oh, those are the Warrior Hikers.
Are those?
We've been gathering up gallons of water for two years now, because they're really good about putting out the gallons of water for the Warrior Hikers, but they don't come back and gather them back up again. So anytime we hear about it, we go gather them up and dispose them.
So then, you wouldn't have a problem with me grabbing them and bringing them down, then?
Pardon me?
You wouldn't have a problem if I grabbed them and bring them down?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. No, when we had water caches up there, we were very careful that we had them, you know, hidden and in tucks with a trash bag.
And they're sealed.
And it was never a mess, but we've been gathering up gallons from many places from the Warrior Hikers.
Yeah, and it's not a mess, because they've got them all tied nice and neat.
Yeah, that's good.
Even if the wind blows, they ain't going nowhere.
They're not going anywhere.
Okay.
No, bring them in, that's good. But if we, if we were able to get, you know, some water up there, like, in the springtime, it isn't so bad, because there's snow up there.
Yeah, you got the springs that are running.
The first few weeks that the hikers are hiking, which is the bulk of the hikers, come in the end of April, there's usually snow in the mountains, so they don't have a problem. It's this time of year that, that we were concerned with the water.
All I can say is, we can get with some of our local businesses, Walmart, Smiths, and some of the motels, and see about getting discounts, but no promises on many of that we can try.
Well, and anything will be a benefit to them. And also, if, if there was something, set up some advertising or something, that there could be a group of people that were volunteers. You know, we just, I can't tell you how busy it is for about four or five weeks in there when these hundreds of hikers are coming through, and if we just had even one or two other people that could, could give rides, that, that had free time and wouldn't mind it. As I said, we don't charge for anything, we're just volunteers. We saw a need and attempted to fulfill it.
Mike?
Well, when we become a Gateway Community, we'll be, we'll be bragging about that.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll let the businesses know around, around here that, the research I've done, these hikers spend an average of $200 when they hit a town like this.
At least.
There's only five stops in New Mexico.
Yes.
And there's only five, five or six states they go through, and it costs about, like you said, $1,000 per state. So when they hit a town, they spend about $200.
At least, and a lot of it is this resupply.
Yeah.
Because first of all, every box they ship out is $15, so you're talking about, you know, 55, 50, $60 just for them to ship out boxes to the next communities. And then it's those groceries. They'll spend, you know, over $100 just in Walmart, or it's, we always kind of encourage Smiths.
We appreciate.
Well, we, we live about a block and a half from Smiths, so I'm driving, I'll take them to the store.
We appreciate your help, and we'll also alert the, the public if they want to provide rides for these folks around town.
That would be great.
When they hit a town, they, they don't want to walk, they're trying to recharge their bodies for two days.
Well, and Grants is right out.
So they don't want to be walking around.
Yeah, Grants is right out so far.
One thing, one thing that we did discuss too, and maybe you could ask them and see if this would go with them or not, we were looking at maybe bike rent stations, starting at McDonald's.
Oh.
Where they could rent a bicycle, and they could use it in town, and then drop it off with the Forest Service on their way out.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, if you would hit them up on that.
Sure.
And if they're doing it Albuquerque, and we could put those little deals, and, I mean, all of us could bring a bike back from the Forest Service back to McDonald's and lock it back up again.
Right.
So as you talk to these people, hit them up and see if they'd like something like that, because that's something that wouldn't cost us a lot of money, and it would, it would help them a bunch.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so if you would, and then get back to us, get back to Laura.
Absolutely.
And let us know how the hikers feel about that, and if that's, because like I said, that won't cost us a bunch of money to do something like that.
I'm sure there's all kinds of wonderful ideas like that. The more people can think about it, the more ideas will come through, and that's a great one.
Thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you very much for listening to me.
And don't get nervous, just come in and talk to us.
Oh my gosh. Never done it before.
Believe me, when I first started up here, la, 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 la.
You're a trucker, drive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, Historical Society?
Historical.
Not hysterical, historical. Steve Owen.
Mary?
Melvin. Mary Savichek, Steve Owen, somebody from the Historical Society, come on up, man. Melvin, too.
Well, Mary, Mary Savichek was supposed to be here and do this, and so I'm totally unprepared to give any kind of information. I'm going to rely on Mike a lot.
That's okay. Would you please introduce yourself for the record?
Yes.
And the two gentlemen with you?
Yes. I am the sec, the treasurer for the Historical Society, Jackie Heath, and this is Steve Owen. He is our chairperson for the museum, which, Airport Museum, which I'm sure you all know him. And we also have our other two officers, John Head hiding back there, she's our secretary, and Melvin Saraceno, he is our vice president. And Mike has got a PowerPoint that kind of explains our situation, what we want to do and what we want, and we're hoping for the city's blessings and any help that we can get from them.
Right, well, I've been working with the Historical Society now for several months because we, we knew that the county is planning on leaving in, in November is the plan right now, we're probably looking at more like January for them to be out of that building. But we don't want the building to be empty, we wanted something to go in and be sort of a caretaker of that building. And so we formed a committee about a year ago for any citizens to come and join in in the effort to try to decide what to do with that building. And it kind of boiled down to the Historical Society was willing to provide volunteers, people that would run this museum if we opened a history museum in, in the building once, once they leave. So, so this is kind of what we've come up with as a, as an idea to, to inhabit that building once the county leaves. So the theme of the history museum would be a timeline that would include ancient history, the Spanish influence, the railroad that impacted our area, mining, all kinds of mining, and then, of course, Route 66. From, from an ancient history point of view, the Chamber of Commerce has this large collection of beautiful pots that are more valuable in that building over there, in that place. It's a fantastic collection of artifacts and pots from the Anasazi period, or dating back all the way to the Anasazi period. Once, you know, we could, we could establish these three-dimensional dioramas and murals on the walls that, that would depict our, our ancient past, and of course, our Native Americans have been in this area for the last 2,000 years, so this would be an appropriate subject. And then there was the Spanish influence. Spain influenced our area in a significant way, of course, bringing tools, ideas, government, and religion to our, to our region. And then, of course, we have the railroad. Everyone knows that Grants was formed here, Grants Camp was actually the original name of this town, and it was formed here because of the railroad. And the railroad provided a way for Grants and Seagull County to grow and prosper. If it weren't for the railroad, we, we just wouldn't be here. And then this area could have model trains, of course, everybody loves model trains, children and adults. And then, of course, our mining and extractive industries, the uranium, lumber, gypsum, fluorospar, carrots. And this would be a segue from, to try to get people from the history museum into our mining museum. And I like the, the talk that's going on over there at the museum. Once they, once they occupy, once the museum, once the mining museum occupies the whole building, that could actually expand, because that's, that's actually called the New Mexico Mining Museum. It's not just uranium, but there was a lot of mining in this area besides uranium. And then close the tour with the Route 66 theme. We're working on this whole theme throughout our area now for Route 66, and I think if we grow that, that will, will attract even more people. And then each month, we would display a classic car in the lobby of the museum, and these cars would be provided by our local citizens. We, everyone knows around here that we have a lot of great cars here and garages around this area. They come out during, and we'll see a bunch of them this next weekend during the Fourth of July. So here's the county building right now, and this large white roof area is, of course, which is going to be demolished, and the county, Tony has told us that, that they're going to demolish this when, once they leave. And so that creates a large parking area that will be available to us, and this could be a, become our downtown parking area for not only cars but motorhomes. The parking lot would also have a dump station, free water, and parking for motorhomes to try to get these folks to stay for two or three hours. And then visitors that unload in that parking area there would be directed through this arch that, this arch right here, that would lead to our downtown area. They walk through here, and they come right into our River Rock Park area, and then we're proposing that this building become public bathrooms, and a possibility that this could be the Chamber of Commerce, and we could actually move. Well, if, if we do public bathrooms, we really need somebody there all the time that is at the front desk, that provides information about our town maybe, and then people who need public bathrooms that would like, and if all, if we added showers to it, we could also provide showers for these CDT hikers as they come through, and then just a way for people to wash their hands. I know that these porta-potties are around town, and we, we all appreciate the ability to go to the bathroom when we need to in one of these places. But people want to wash their hands too, especially if you have children or changing a diaper or something like that. People need a way to not only use restrooms, but to, to clean up. If you had someone at the front desk, you could keep the ingested people from, it would be a perfect spot to, to move the ingested people off of our street and into the facility. You could also, with our, and somebody may know that this area here now is the Veterans Center, and we could also include a small museum in there that would honor our veterans, and that could include photos and documents provided by our local citizens. And somewhere along, maybe on High Street or somewhere around that area, we could erect some columns representing each war with the names of all the people in this area that served. Gallup just put up a really cool tribute to their veterans over there, and it was like this, it were columns for each war, and they're collecting names from all the folks in the town that served. So this, we would direct people from Route 66 into this area, and we'd just go right in front of the mining museum, back to that parking lot, and maybe put a fence around that parking lot to, to block out some of the areas behind it. So right now, the museum, this is, this is the area that, that the museum would, would occupy, right there where the taxation is and the assessor's office in that area. Everything on the right of this building, this is the county building, a layout of the county building. The offices on the far right there, they're still available for other things, in case there's other ideas that we want to do with this building, all those offices over on the right could still be utilized. So this area that was the convention center, it would become the convention center again, and the city and county would share that for weddings, graduations, statewide meetings, and other events like that. Right now, there's existing doors that can be closed and locked, and so you can use half of the bill, when, half of the building's closed, you can turn all the lights off on that side, and you can use either part of the facility, either the museum or the convention center separately by shutting these doors right here. And there's ADA bathrooms in each section, so there's, we don't have to make any changes with bathrooms there. We invited Melvin here tonight, he's the executive director of the museum out at Akamon. He was telling us that 3,000 people a month visit the museum in Akamon, and we think that we'll also see these kinds of numbers if we, if we open a history museum here. So we feel like we're almost there, we just need more people exploring our downtown areas so business can flourish. People are willing to show open shops in our downtown area, but they need our help to generate more foot traffic. And that's been Team 66's goal and this council's goal since we started as a group a couple years ago. And so, you know, we'd like to get some of these things accomplished before, you know, the three of us may not win our election next time, so.
And the three of us are the ones that started all.
So, you know, just an idea, some ideas out there, we, we're still open for ideas. And, but we really feel like we need to get on the path of something before people move out, before the county moves out. They're taking 100 employees with them, and so it's going to have a big impact on our downtown area here. So we feel like we need to establish something here that, that'll, that'll revitalize our downtown area when, when the county leaves.
Questions?
Not at this time.
Mike?
How much you figure all this is going to cost?
Well, we, we think that if, if the city could, could commit a half a million dollars this year, when they move out and when the county moves out in November, we could start with design build and try to find out, you know, what, what the cost would be. Once they tear the building down, we could get the parking lot ready, do some things that would allow us to use the building next summer, and go ahead and start renting it for weddings. We know that the KC Hall over here is, is full all the time with rentals, and that if we had this building available over there, if we could rent it for weddings and parties, things like that, that it would help pay the, the light bill and pay, pay for the bills on this, what it's going to take to run that place. Or if we could just get an MOU started with the county, a memorandum of understanding where, so we could commit this building to something rather than just all of a sudden it's out there, we don't, we just don't want it to become a hog farm or something.
And I agree with that, but anything we do there, I believe the county has to split the cost of this halfway. It is a county building, they're the ones that are chosen to abandon it, but there's nothing wrong with this end of the building. The only part that's screwed up is the, the courts.
Courts.
Okay, the rest of that building is fine. We've been through it, we know it's good. The roof's good, okay, we know it's good. But my point being is $500,000 is a whole lot of money when the state's coming in, $68 million in the hole. And the state's going to be $68 million in the hole now in July, guys, so don't be surprised they don't come and pull out $350 for the library and all that stuff that we've done. Fortunately, we are in a position where we can still do the library. We may not be able to look at this until after next year, after this budget here cycle's gone, but I think it's a grand idea because we don't want it empty, period, okay? We don't want a big old empty building right here in the middle of our downtown area. That's the last thing we want, okay?
The only we could be pursuing is a community development project, because that would work here.
Yeah, any, anything, anything that'll work. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to go, because we don't want the building empty. If we leave it empty, it'll be destroyed in, in a year. I mean, and, and that's the last thing we want, especially right in our downtown area. Comments, guys, please? I mean, that, that, I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
So probably what it mainly needs done is for the kitchen facilities to be re-putted. They've got the basic structure, but it was taken out so that it could be like a convention or wedding center.
Yeah, that's another thing. Yeah, that's another thing.
Maybe new carpet, yeah, a lot, just some cosmetic stuff, but the structure's pretty good.
Bathrooms are good.
Yeah.
Right.
Everything's working in it. The county did do an assessment on the building, had an engineer come in and look at it. And it was, they gave it a pass.
They did that on our insistence, remember?
Yeah.
They did that on our insistence.
There's other options, you know, I mean, the city could move, the city could move in there. I mean, the city government, and then use this building for our museum. You know, we just want to get some things out there for people to talk about, you know? What we could do, but if we start planning something after they leave, we're from six months to a year behind. But if we do it now, we can have a smoother transition.
And like I said, we need to keep the county, whatever the cost is. Because we don't want to take the building over ourselves, I don't think, anyway, that's my opinion. That we should split all the cost for the county. Unless, of course, the council decides that we're going to move our, what's over there and leave the water department here and do something else with this building. I'll have a ball, the county might give it to us for a buck or something then, okay? I'm open to just about anything. My point is, the last thing we want is a great big building right here downtown, empty, to be destroyed and graffitied and just torn to pieces. So that's where I'm at, guys. Think about it. Get it in your mind because we're going to have a few months to work this out. Maybe we can come up with some other ideas too, but.
I really like, sorry, I'd rather like the idea of keeping an old building and making it a commercial building. It's not a commercial building because they're remodeling it, but I would like to see all these entities move in there.
Eddie, you went to school there, didn't you?
Went to school.
You went to grade school there, didn't you?
And then I also like to see if we can't move on as soon as possible.
Yeah, you know, and like I said, we really need to wait and see what happens with the state this year, guys. They, the municipal league's already warned us. It's going to be 68 million, easy, if not more. And if they start yanking monies back from us again like they did last time, I mean, I will give back to Bob, erase it. He did leave us financially pretty set up, okay? Where we can do certain things, and this might be one of them.
Would there be any areas available for rent?
Yes.
Could, could, I mean, is that an option? If somebody wanted to put in, I don't know, someplace to drink or eat in the area? You know, you know, coffee shop or some, I don't know.
Yeah. Anything was, can be on the table.
Anything, and I agree with that. Because like I said, we just don't want an empty building down here. That's the last thing we want. We want people living out of there so that it stays functional. We want the maintenance maintained on the building. We don't want it empty. You guys got anything to add to that? Anybody out there in the audience got something to add to that?
I would just like to tell you that we are in desperate need of a building or someplace to put our things. We hold our quarterly meetings at the art gallery. And we have some very good programs that come up at each one of those meetings. Our board meetings are once a month and we hold them out at the golf course because we have no place. And the artifacts and the items that we are collecting, they're in somebody's garage or basement or someplace like that. And so as we're collecting these things, we need a home for them. This is grants' history, the county's history. And we really think it's worth preserving. And we're looking for any kind of help, you know? Whatever, somebody can come up with an idea, the building would be perfect for us, but we would take this building if you've got other ideas. And, and at the same time, you know, you're moving things all in one kind of an area because you've got the art gallery down the road, you've got the Chamber of Commerce, then you would have us and maybe, you know, some other things would fall into place also. And there could even be some kind of, something worked out with, for instance, Akama. They have their museum down here. Oh, you need to go see our airport museum, you need to go see the historical museum. And we could transfer people to go down to theirs and things. So there's a lot to work with. We just need a place to be able to work. So anything that you can do for us, boy, we'd really like it. You've helped us a lot with the airport museum and we certainly, Steve will attest to that, certainly appreciate that. I mean, and it's drawing people. We're getting a lot of people stop by every month and it's increasing. So we know that there's people that are interested in the area. We just need to give them a lot to look at.
Thank you very much. And like I said, I'm sorry I removed you guys last week.
You should be ashamed of yourself.
But my point is, is we're trying to not get those four or five dollar meetings like to happen at the calendar. So, okay, so thank you guys very much. Steve, you got something else?
Well, Jackie didn't have her talk quite prepared a week ago, but. No, I just want to say that it's a mighty small county in New Mexico that doesn't have a local area history museum. And this county got a very late start compared to the rest of the state. But this is something that the ball was dropped and it shouldn't be rolling off into the corner much longer. The aviation museum is very specialized and you folks have been very supportive of us. Will hope to be completed in the next fiscal year. And the county and the village have also supported the aviation museum. So it's going to be well worth coming out to see. But anything along the way of an agreement, a conceptual plan, memorandums of understanding, or resolutions of support will be the first steps. And from there, it's going to require a master plan for the building itself generally, but certainly a professionally planned museum concept that can be linked to a budget and ultimately linked into funding sources. So again, we thank you all for your support in the past and hope that this idea will take off here.
Yes, I'd say. Yeah, sure. Hi, for the record, I'm from the Pablo Laguna and I am the museum specialist at this guy's city called Justin, not the executive director. When we first were introduced to this idea, I thought it was fantastic. You know, it's, it's, it has potential. And I think it has potential because part of this museum is inviting the community and, you know, and becoming part of the community. And there's a lot of things that can be done. Like I said, it was mentioned that there's a history of Native Americans in the area. And this would be a perfect opportunity to educate visitors to grants about Laguna, about Akama. And like I said, it's a good place to involve the community as well. You know, when we were talking about this, we were thinking about how many homes here in Grants have historic items, photos, documents and things. It would be a grand opportunity for the community to come in, create their own exhibit, you know? Share things about their past, their history, their families to visitors and to the grants area. So I think it has potential. And I think you should seriously consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Next, sewer water line on Truman Avenue, item number five.
We've had a lot of water breaks on Truman Avenue, probably four or five in the last month. And the citizens in that neighborhood called and they're angry and they want us to do something about it. So, you know, part of our discussions before is that we need to start replacing these old water and sewer lines instead of just putting Band-Aids on it. So I did get a quote for the sewer line on Truman and my jaw dropped open. This stuff is expensive. So we're looking at, the second page of that at the bottom, in very tiny print, is $81,619.60 to replace, it's about 500 linear feet of water line. And I, I think we need to start, start doing that instead of just going and keep repairing. I had them give me a quote for Stevens Street as well. That's another one that we have like four or five breaks a year at least.
At least.
At least. And that one, we're looking at 270,000.
That's more like 1,000 linear feet to any?
Yeah, it's a lot, it's probably a lot, longer. So anyway, I'd like for us to start with Truman. And then if the budget can manage, we'll start putting some of these in as we can manage it and getting them taking care of the ones that were having these major breaks. And I know CH2 and Hill would appreciate it because they're getting called out at all hours of the night to go repair these and taking a lot of their time as well. And it's probably costing us more to put these Band-Aids than just to fix it.
Questions? Mike, Eddie?
I think we need to fix it.
Do we?
Fix it. I need to meet.
I entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we go ahead and come up with $81,619.60?
Second?
Yes, I made it.
Council Reynolds, Council Woskis, Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis? Next, a resolution accepting the grant agreement for the wastewater treatment plant.
Small is depending on.
This is actually a planning grant for a PER for the affluent reuse of the wastewater treatment plant. And these planning grants, I'm finding out they're somewhat backwards compared to the votes of the grants that we received. We get an approval that we have the grant, go out and do the work. And after we get everything done, then they send us an agreement. And so this is to finalize the agreement. We did one of these a few months back, if you remember, for the PER, for the wastewater treatment plant. This is for the affluent reuse. So this is, this is a grant that we received. It's already been spent and we're basically doing the agreement, getting the reimbursement.
Questions? Motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and accept the 50,000 more grant.
Accept resolution 161521.
I second.
Second. Yes, Council Reynolds, Council Woskis, Dickens, Council Lewis.
Yes.
Cool, next one.
Okay, this is a time extension for this agreement. This is some funding that we received to do the design of First Street Phase Two. First Street Phase Two is road reconstruction, curb and gutter sidewalk, drainage, water. I don't know if there's any sewer on that road or not. And the, this money we received for doing the design, we've been working on the design. The design has been 90% complete now for some time. We've been pursuing construction funding for that roadway. We have requested a couple of times from District Six DOT. They said that they thought that they would be able to fund it to the state. We haven't had anything. We're going to continue to pursue construction funding. 75% of this grant has already been reimbursed to the city. So we just need an extension in time so we can find construction funding. We have to have construction funding before we can complete the design. We have 90% of the design done, so it's just the final, but we need construction funding.
This is from which part of First Street?
From Harrison to Roosevelt.
Harrison to Roosevelt, okay, that's on the north then, right in the blue. Questions?
Do we know what construction's going to cost? Do we have an estimate?
We do. It's right at about a million dollars, well, a million two.
1.2 million dollars to review.
And how much is our portion?
It depends on the construction funding that we find. We're going to pursue some, some federal funding. We're going to pursue some federal funding. If we can get some federal funding, then typically that's just under 15%. That would be our part. So that's a pretty good deal.
We need to apply for this extension, so I make a motion, we apply for the extension, D14116.
Your resolution is 161522. Second?
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis, Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Next, resolution for tap funding, Legacy Trail.
Okay, the tap funding for Legacy Trail, right now this is for construction to continue with the Legacy Trail. It may be, we have some construction funding right now that is in, that we're going to be in jeopardy of losing just because we cannot, we're not able to complete the right-of-way acquisitions that we have to do and everything as far as the design that we're doing. We're still trying to meet the deadline. The deadline is September 1st. And I can tell you, it's almost an impossibility that we're going to meet that deadline simply because the appraisals for this right-of-way are going to take 45 days. After that, there's got to be, it will go to the state for review and approval. Then after that, we have to come back to the property owners and present the, you know, the deal to them basically. And then they have 30 days to act on that. So the timeframe, we have the schools involved with that, which means that it's going to have to go through DFA as well. And so there, and we couldn't start this process until we had the final right-of-way maps done. And the final right-of-way maps done were just completed now. I got them last week. And that, that has been the big thing. And just, the right-of-way maps have taken a long time because of the research that has been involved to identify what property out there is city-owned and what property out there is, is whose property. And so there's been a lot of research being done, not only in Sebelah, but most of this has been done in Valencia County.
Questions?
So even if we apply for this, there's no guarantee we're going to get it based on time?
No, this is, no, no, we're going to apply for this, but if we end up losing this construction funding, then this is going to replace it. This is going to replace that funding. If we somehow manage to keep this funding, and there is a chance we can keep it, if somebody is not able to use their funding, then they'll come back. We have a shovel-ready project. They'll come back and give us our funding back. So there is a possibility we may not lose that funding, but we'd still like to apply for this. If we don't lose that funding, then this could be used for the next phase.
And this is one of those funding deals that I'm worried about the state pulling back with the 68 million.
This tap funding is actually federal and that'll work then.
That'll work. I make a motion, we accept the 161523 tap.
Second? Council Woskis?
No.
No, Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution, 161524, Tammy?
One moment. Yeah, you have, in your packet.
Some bunch of adjustments that we're requesting. And basically, it's just moving, making some adjustments based on some actuals of, now that we're seeing where our revenues at and where our expenditures at. This chart's rather hard to read. If you'd like, I can go through it item by item. But basically, for instance, on the first, first page at the top, the third figure down is what we're trying to increase budget revenue in that line item. Based on our actuals, we received a million 239 more in revenue. So we're increasing that and then lowering the transfer amount or actually adding to the transfer amount of 35,230. And then in the next section, which is corrections, the 15,000 is the budget adjustment. So this is rather hard to read. I'm not sure if you want me to go through line by line, but there's nothing major. We're just moving some figures around to relate to our actuals at this time of, at this point.
Questions?
There's the end.
And basically what it is, is final budget adjustments to make it to the end budget where we can close out, guys, to where we can start to move on. We got one more, right?
As of the quarter, we'll have some more adjustments.
Questions? Tammy's sitting right there, don't ask me. No questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept resolution 161524 for quarter budget adjustment.
Second?
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis? Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Economic Development Foundation, Manny? No, I'm just kidding, go ahead, both. I'll give you the report, I want it.
In your packet, you have an agreement to the Economic Development Foundation contract, which goes one more year for this period. And to reflect the amount that you all decided last meeting of 44,000, to fund them at 44,000 this next year.
So we're looking for the motion to accept the amendment.
I make a motion to accept amendment.
Second?
Council?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Yes. See the manager's report?
So periodically, I try to update the council on some of the stuff I've been working on. You have a list of stuff there. Some of the things, not everything, but some of the stuff that I've worked on in the last six months. So if there are any questions.
Questions from the manager's report?
No, I think you're doing a good job. You're a busy person.
Definitely busy.
And I keep throwing, oh, we're out, guys. How are you going to lie? I ain't going to lie about that. I think she's doing an outstanding job. I've even had to back off because I've been...
Especially Act Number Twenty-Nine.
I've been pushing her real hard. This was Twenty-Nine, Eddie.
ATV ordinance.
So I entertain a motion to accept the, city's manager's report?
I make a motion, we accept the report.
Second?
City manager, second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next one, dispatch billing.
In your packet, you have the dispatch billing for the third quarter. Kathy talked with them and made a few adjustments to their initial request, which is in the memo format. And it looks like they're asking for, our portion would be seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four, thirty-three for the third quarter. And we paid forty-seven point five percent of their total effect.
You know, guys, I voted against this probably my first three years on the council. And Craig, whom I really trust with anything to do with police department works and all that good stuff, says that this is what we need. This is where we need to stay. We don't want it back. We don't want to take it over. And I'm good with the chief's recommendation to keep paying this bill, guys. That's where I'm at. And believe me, I've fought it for years, but...
Yeah, you did.
I've got a chief that I totally trust, guys, and he says this is the way to go. We don't want it. It's a headache. And I think that we have enough headaches, okay? Without adding another one, okay? And on that note, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we gave a seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-three cents?
Second?
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
The last one is mine, is an appointment to the airport board. Mr. Richard A. Best is who I am recommending. He is a veteran, airport veteran. And that's good enough for me. I'm a Marine veteran. I don't know much about flying except that pilot's pretty good.
And you're still one.
That's it. So I entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the mayor's running issue.
The airport board, second?
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Comments from the council? Let's start with Manny tonight.
Well, Mayor, I went out and looked at golf course. Golf course is looking fantastic. The equipment we have out there looks really bad. And I would really, I know you thought this to the nail on, but I would really like to see it moved on maybe going back to leasing the golf carts. It would sure save a lot of headaches and a lot of work for everybody around. And we are working hard to beautify our community and the people that are coming in really need to see what kind of equipment we have.
I talked to two other golf courses today that are municipal golf courses. And two can carry purchases, they're old, but they only have ten. And he said they replace them about every three to four years. So I think we were thinking they would last a long time. Ours are seven years old. And I went out and looked at them this last week. They look pitiful. Their seats are tearing. And I've been trying to find somebody that does upholstery. But besides that, some of the front casings have cracks in them, holes in them. They look pretty bad. And I talked to another golf course in Colvis and they told me that they leased theirs, but they only leased them for three to four years. And that's about all. And then they start having mechanical problems and then they put them out for auction, I guess, or they send it back to the lease company and they try to get a new set.
Our prior, previous leases, Paul, were they for four years? They were? They were for four years, right? You know, guys, and I spoke with Manny at this and I told Laura to look at it and see which one's more cost-effective for us. As much as I hate to admit it, it looks like leasing is probably the most cost-effective way to do this. We didn't know it until we tried it. Now we know that we're wrong. So I would recommend that we go back and look at, at the end of this year, or next year's budget, that we look to go ahead and enter into another lease for four years and bring in all that and all those.
And we own these golf carts?
Yes, we own these ones right now, so...
Well, we would just put them in the auction or something when they're done.
Probably, yeah.
Trade them in.
Probably trade them in.
Trade them in, put them in auction, maybe keep a few of them. We're downtown area, you know?
Events.
Well, there you go. They're legal on the streets now, so... Okay? Council Lewis, your comments?
You're done, Manny? I'm done, sir. Laura, are you aware of our animal ordinance here? And does it include dogs that are tied or chained?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I don't remember the specifics.
I mean, this is prohibited. I've got dogs and I know the specifics. They're supposed to have a running lead where they can run back and forth. They're not supposed to be stuck to a stationary pole where it just goes and ties them up and stuff. I'm, these three here on the corner, I've noticed them getting hung up on the fence and stuff.
Yeah, I got a, I got a call about that. And I was going to mention it to Laura. Somebody was trying to have a wedding over there. And they brought their dog because their dog was part of the family, voila.
Like Moti's dog.
Yeah. And those dogs were barking through the entire way. And, and those dogs are tied to ropes and chains. And that's cruelty to animals. And if there's not an ordinance, I would ask the council to consider...
There isn't an ordinance.
...that prohibits tying any dog to a rope. If people cannot provide enclosure for their animal, then they shouldn't have an animal.
Yeah, we just went through that animal ordinance. It took us god years to even get to where it would get to a document that we would all... How many years did it take, Denise?
About five.
Five years, right? To where we get that document to a place where everybody would vote on it. I was very pleased with it when it came out. I'm a dog guy. I mean, and I don't think dogs should be tied either. My heart, except when I bring them in here, they don't want to tear it up, you know? But I agree, we'll put, we'll get on the dog count on that. They should have already been taken down.
And then maybe put a notice in the paper that tells people that it's illegal to have a dog tied to a chain or a rope.
In a stationary object. You've got to have that running lead on it.
That's okay. You know, as long as a dog can move around.
Yeah, where he can run back and forth. Eddie, you got anything?
I spoke to Laura earlier and said I was going to mention, council had a tournament this weekend, the Knuckleheads. And they not only put on a good tournament, they left the park immaculately clean. Each year they do a tournament, they leave the place as they find it clean. Question, are boulders operational right now?
As far as I know.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking, we're going to have the fireworks Monday. And a lot of people park on Sacoleras and some of them park on George Harris. See if we can get both areas moved this week so people have, you know, so people have a place to park. And that's all I have.
I have something. It actually has to do with the animals also. I'd like the community to get, do something about volunteering to be on the Animal Services Board. I think that board needs to be revitalized and I want to see progressive and positive-minded people to apply for the board.
Thank you.
I don't want to hear what was in the past.
Thank you.
And what precipitated this. My cinnamon bolted from her dog walker and she was gone for sixteen days. And she was only two blocks from the house and she even had on a leash.
Wow.
And I went to the shelter and had her picture there and at the vets. And everybody in the community I talked to were very nice, except some people told me they would not have taken her, if they found her, would not take her to the shelter because they would immediately euthanize her. Well, that's not true. I'm going there to the shelter, have you cinnamon? And finally she goes, well, no, well, when we see her, we'll call you. But she finally made it home. But she had been, she wasn't then...
She fired rock over there. Well, it just blows my mind.
Yeah, yeah. The foundation for the box culvert goes down, I believe, ten feet or twelve feet.
Yes.
And, and they never did any tests in that area to see how deep the rock was.
When they did, they did the test on First Street.
Yeah, we had the same thing on First Street. We had to take out rock there to get that box culvert in the ground that deep that way we wanted it. Yeah, we sure did.
Well, apparently they forgot when they did the design.
Yeah, they forgot it.
Well, let's not say, let's not sign their change order. They'll remember real quick.
No, it's not the contractor, it's the engineer. Anything else? That's it. Again, Manny?
I got one.
We had you first.
I got something here. And I know you don't want to take credit for this, but we need to thank Councilman Lewis for all the hard work he did.
You're cutting into mine now, man.
Oh, I might?
That was mine. I thank you very much for everything you've done out there, the Route sixty-sixteen, everybody that's helped you, all those individuals. Let them know that we deeply appreciate it from this council because it is awesome. It's totally awesome. It looks great. I can't wait for that caboose to get finished. I want to go inside. My little brother told me he used to have potbelly stoves in them.
Yeah, we do.
I want to see that, I really do. But that's what I got. I'm entertaining a motion to close this meeting.
I'm not done yet.
Manny, how many times we going to go back to you?
The other thing is, we want to thank Laura. Without Laura, we would have never got these projects done. Come on, guys, we got to give her credit for that.
Guys, I thank Laura every day.
And the city and the county.
The city and the county for all this.
Funds for this stuff.
You know, guys, and it's just amazing because we're not doing anything that could not have been done before. But for whatever reason, they chose not to do it, okay? And all we're doing is choosing to do it. And as long as we're here, I say we continue to choose to do it and not do nothing, do nothing.
But when people...
They see it, man.
When people complain about it maybe costing a lot of money. We moved that caboose, painted it, got it to the condition that it's in right now for less than ten thousand dollars. And the city takes in about twenty thousand dollars a day in gross receipts tax. So a project like that, an investment like that, that's going to sit in our town here now for the next fifty years, looking great like that, only costs us one-half of one day of our gross receipts tax. And it's an investment that's worth it.
Yes, it is.
And not only that, the city didn't even pay for that one. That was a grant by, that was given to us by the, by B N S F. And then we talked to the senator about possibly giving some more money for the inside of that. So he's going to ask B N S F for another small grant to fund changing the inside or restoring the inside of it.
No, like I said, I thank Laura every day. I push her every day and I thank her every day. I try to leave her alone on Fridays with the whole weekend. Sometimes I can't.
He's calling me at six-thirty in the morning with a list of stuff to do.
Not only when I see her car parked at City Hall. Not, if her car's not parked there, I don't call her. But if it's parked there at six-thirty in the morning and I'm doing it, I'm not bothering her. I do, I do call her at six-thirty in the morning. On that, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.